A couple other committee colleagues and other committees, hopefully those will end fairly soon and they'll join us. So if we could begin with item number one.
For item one, the mayor has submitted a memorandum relative to the reexemption of one senior project coordinator. This is for the Community Development Department and I believe the department representatives are here to speak on the item.
Good afternoon. Manny Chavez with the Community Development Department. What you have before you is a request for a reexemption of a senior project coordinator. This individual was actually reassigned to CDD as part of the reassignment of the larger Human Relations Commission to the department. Specifically, that was to relieve the general fund of costs related to staffing the former commission as it formerly was structured. The position and all the positions related to the commission are now paid for 100% by the Community Development Block grant. And they are fully funded in this year's consolidated plan. The position is actually filled and actually supervises three human relations advocates that are actually also staffed at CDD. The role of the individual is to oversee activities, group relations throughout the city, and to intervene in instances of conflict. The most recent example being the shooting in the Westlake District where LAPD was involved. There was a community unrest related to that and our staff were actively engaged in intervening and providing support to community residents as well as to LAPD. So again, we're requesting the reexemption of that position so that it can be formally recognized at CDD.
And how's the managed hiring process come into play with these types of positions?
My understanding that this position has been approved.
Is it general funded or?
No, it is funded by the Community Development Block grant. And that was one of the primary reasons for moving it to the department, is to relieve the general fund of that cost.
And why is the position re-exempted?
It actually expires and we are requesting a reexemption so that it will be identified as a CDD position. It was formerly with the Human Relations Commission itself, independent of CDD.
And I wonder if you could briefly explain the charter exemption process? This is my first time.
And I would actually have to defer to the personnel representatives to do that.
Chairman Michael Cole, Community Development Department, I apologize. Our personal director called in sick unexpectedly, so she is not here to answer those kind of questions for the department. We have the managers in charge of the positions that we're seeking to have approval through this committee, but we're at a disadvantage unfortunately be with our human relations person not here. So for the more technical questions, we could either come back to you at another meeting or find another solution and work around that.
Excuse me, councilman. I think that question really should be responded to by the Personnel Department of Philistines is here, who will be happy to explain that.
That would be great.
The Personnel Department does become involved in both types of exemptions that you see here before you today. The one that we're currently looking at is one under one of the provisions of our charter, which is for management professional scientific or expert services. And this particular position was previously in human relations. It was exempted in that department at that time and then the function was transferred. Now, this is a request to re-exempt under that provision of the charter. And it is the Personnel Department's belief and we have applied back to the mayor that we think that's an appropriate exemption. The second type of exemption that you're going to see today is one that is for grant-funded positions for a term of no more than two years by application of the procedures described and they can be extended for up to three years. And in some instances, the department may believe and we may believe that the position is going to last for just two years, but funding continues. And if that scenario occurs, we have one of two choices, either to go in for a reexemption under the other provision in the city charter or to make it a civil service class. And you'll see both of these types of charter exemptions before you today.
Thank you. I don't think I have any other questions, so I will ask that we approve the reexemption. Assuming my other colleagues come in, we'll ask them to add their voices to this as well. Thank you.
Do you wish to have the department stay just in case there's questions on this item later?
Probably won't be necessary.
Ready for item two?
Item two.
For item two, it's pretty much the same scenario. The mayor has submitted a memorandum requesting an exemption for one senior project coordinator. However, this is for the Housing Department and the Housing Department is here to answer any questions you have.
Good afternoon, councilman.
Hello.
I'm the Personnel Director for the Housing Department. This is a simple request, as was mentioned by Phyllis Roscoe, asking for an exemption, part of 1001. And this is specifically for housing opportunity for persons with aid program. We're looking for a senior project coordinator to oversee the program and carry out all the duties required to make it effective. It's 100% funded from HOPA grant, so there's no general fund element to it.
And are you planning on going outside City Hall to hire for this position or are you advertising in-house?
We'd like to consider both because, you know, we do feel there's a lot of expertise in-house, but we want to make sure that we can tap all the resources we have, so we'd like to consider both.
And again, how does the managed hiring process impact this particular hire?
We have to go through the process and request permission and we will be asking for permission to go outside the city.
You haven't done that yet.
We have not done that, that's correct.
And if HOPA is a grant-funded program, why is the general fund going to be paying for this position? Or is it paying for this position?
It will be paid for with HOPA funds.
So this is entirely paid for by HOPA funds?
That's correct.
And we're not having to advance any general funded monies at all?
That's correct, yes.
Is this already part of the 2010-2011 budget?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, so I'll ask that we approve this exemption as well.
Thank you.
On item three, you have a request for an exemption based on, I'm sorry, no, it's the same type of exemption request, my apologies. This is for the Los Angeles City Employees Retirement System.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Thank you. Tom Matus with Lasers. We're requesting an exemption for our Chief Investment Officer position. This is the first time that we've made such a request. I can go through the duties, the main duties of the Chief Investment Officer if you'd like, but suffice it to say it's an exceptionally important position to our members and also the city's general fund as we heard in the discussion earlier today in council in regard to the health subsidy. And going through, having an exemption for this position would allow us to hire more quickly, be able to cast a wider net. And also, it allows us to terminate an individual if by chance there are breach of their fiduciary responsibility, which is very important to us at Lasers, or otherwise materially failed to perform their duties.
So if this is a request for a new exemption, what happened to the person that filled this position previously?
He retired under ERIP.
And at that time, it was not an exempted position?
That's correct.
How are your recruiting efforts going for the position and what's the process used to recruit someone for this position?
Well, we're going to be using an executive search firm. The Personnel Department has a pre-approved list and we went out and checked with those different services regarding their cost and quality of services. And just this morning, our board approved us to go ahead and negotiate with a selected firm to provide that executive search capability. And they would presumably be advertising through Pension Investments and other industry journals to help us find the best candidates that we can. As far as our status on that search, we're just at the beginning stage. And we also have a request slowly working its way through the system to actually increase the pay of the Chief Investment Officer so we can be competitive in an area that we are very far from competitive right now as far as salary goes.
And there's only one Chief Investment Officer, correct?
We have one, Fire and Police has one, the Treasurer has one, and DWP's retirement system has one, but yes, Lasers only has one.
And what's our history of being able to keep this position filled? Does it have a lot of turnover typically or not?
It has not typically had a lot of turnover. The individual that was in the position previously came up through the civil service system. Since that time, the investment arena has become much more complex. And so we need to find someone that has across the boards investment experience and we believe that this is the best way that we can find that individual.
So the whole process worked, but not as likely to work well in the present times?
The most recent Chief Investment Officer recruitment that we've held was in the Treasurer's office. And in that instance, they ended up with an exemption also. I think as has been stated, the field has become much more complex and the competition to get the best people possible has become more difficult. And although we've recruited successfully in the past and people stayed entire career, our most recent experience has been the same as Lasers.
And is there already funding in this year's budget to fill this position?
There is.
And also, I think there was some question about there being a meet and confer issue related to this hire. What's, if so, what is it? What's the status of all of it?
I'm not aware of any meet and confer issue regarding the hiring of this position.
Not the hiring, but the salary. I think they're trying to establish a new salary for the class.
That's on a separate track though.
And that's being done through?
And that is subject to meet and confer.
But that's not before us?
Not today.
I have no other questions, so I'll ask that we approve this exemption as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
On item four, the request is for an exemption as well. However, this is under Charter Section 101d4, which Phyllis previously explained. And this has gone through the civil service exemption process. And this is for one Assistant Chief Grants Administrator and this person will be working in the Commission on Community and Family Services Program.
Good afternoon again. Manny Chavez with CDD. As mentioned, this is an exemption request for an Assistant Chief Grants Administrator within the department. About a year ago, there was an ordinance passed that established the new Commission for Community and Family Services. Its primary role is to have oversight of the larger Community Development Block grant programs. It's a 15-member commission. Unfortunately, it has no designated staff. And at the time that the ordinance was established, it was understood that CDD would assume responsibility for the management of that commission and support of their work. For that particular reason or specific reason, we are requesting this exemption of the Assistant Chief Grants Administrator. The only other position that we have supporting the commission is a senior clerk typist at present. Both of these positions are funded in the CON Plan for Year 37, so there's full funding for both. And specifically, the request at the level of Assistant Chief is the interaction with the commission members that are professionals from various sectors of the community. And the discussion around policy issues related to the CWG CON Plan felt as relevant or supports this position request.
I understand that the position is grant-funded, but my understanding is that the general fund may be front-loading the funding of that. Is that true? And if so, how does that work?
No, it has been totally supported through the Community Development Block grant since the work was assigned to us.
So there's no front-loading from the general?
No, none whatsoever.
And I know that CDD is still requesting positions to work on grant-funded projects. I know there was a suggestion a while back to create a grant division in the CAO's office. Where does that stand and at what point will grants come out of that office rather than individual departments and divisions?
I haven't been privy to that discussion, so I couldn't comment. I only know that we're the designated grant administrator for the block grant as well as for the Workforce Investment Act programs. We've played that role since the inception of all of those various grants. But again, I couldn't comment on any proposed action otherwise.
So you haven't heard anything that would lead you to believe that it wouldn't make sense to move forward with this hire?
No, and given the level of expertise that is required and that's been developed and established over the years, I wouldn't see that as a valuable move or a prudent move to make.
And I don't know if anyone happens to be here that's a And I don't know if anyone happens to be here that's aware of where we stand in terms of creating a grant division. If not, that's a question we'll ask at a future meeting to check the status of that. So each department is still responsible for their own grant-funded programs, fully, as of this point?
Well, with CDD specifically, again, being the administrator for the Community Development Block Grant, we allocate dollars to the CON Plan to the Housing Department, and then their response for the management of those grant funds themselves, as well as Recreation and Parks that receive CWG funds from us. But again, we are the designated grant administrator for those funds.
Okay, and I have no further questions, unless that's a committee member walking into the room, which I don't think it is. I will thank you for your presentation and recommend that we move forward with this as well. On item five, I don't actually have any questions and would have recommended that that go on a consent calendar. However, right now, I am the consent calendar, so I'll just move that item.
That brings us to item six. And that will be a City Administrative Officer Report relative to increased staffing for the Los Angeles Fire Department's Professional Standards Division. Public Safety Committee has recommended approval of the recommendations contained in the CAO report.
Whoever would like to start with an update on this?
Mark Davis with the CAO's office. This report requests the authority for eight special investigator, two positions, and one management, and two positions for the Professional Standards Division for the Fire Department. This was approved in the Public Safety Committee on March 7. Currently, the PSD unit has 24 employees. And in 2010, the department opened 985 complaints, of which 208 of these were assigned to PSD. And 59 of them were assigned to the Equal Employment Opportunity Unit for PSD. In the council hearings for 2010-11, there was $1.4 million put in the UB for this unit. But subsequent to that, in January of this year, $1.25 million was approved in council to be taken from this to offset the civilian and sworn furloughs. So the balance of the funding that is in there will fund six of the positions for four periods for the balance of this year, and the other three positions for three pay periods.
And for the record, Mr. Parks has joined us. Anything else that anyone wants to say upfront before?
Let me start asking questions.
Sure, Assistant Chief Bersick, Professional Standards Commander. Good morning, actually, good afternoon. Basically, the original system for PSD was built to handle about 100 complaints, and now we're about 1,200 complaints on an annual basis. So with that increase, we didn't build in the staffing originally to accommodate that whole number of caseload. So what we're looking for is actually to add to that staffing level, bringing in the civilian folks so that they can actually be there for a longer time period than the sworn, which we rotate in and out on a two-year basis, and actually have that continuity in services.
Thank you. So I'll ask a few questions. Where's the department finding the savings to absorb these costs? Because I know the funding has been swept. So how is the department proposing to cover that?
You know, what I would have to address on that is it is part of the Fire Chief's budget for the upcoming budget season. It's one of his priority packages, so it is listed in that, and the savings were originally from part of the coverage plan that was actually reset for the department.
So that's for next year. How is he covering this year's shortfall to fund this through the end of the year?
I'd have to defer that to Mark as of right now.
There is still $163,000 left in the UB that is set aside for this, and that's why we have it kind of set apart for the two pay periods. The four pay periods for the first six, and the three pay periods for the other three, that will cover the $163,000 that's left from the UB for this fiscal year.
And so that should adequately cover it through the end of the year?
Correct.
And again, how's the staffing going to be sustained in the next fiscal year? Is this already part of the proposed budget?
Yes.
Along with, obviously, the difficulty of changing our modified coverage into a more permanent plan? So somehow?
Right.
Found the funding for that as well. Is this going to be fully staffed by civilians? Are there going to be positions held by sworn officers, a combination of both?
It's actually a mixture of both. What we do is we have civilian investigators working alongside with the sworn investigators.
And the report states that the commission requested the approval of $230,000 or so in additional expenses for office build-out, furniture, office supplies, et cetera. Does the city not have vacant space that could be used to house this instead?
We've actually been working with the CAO's office and GSD, and we've looked at all the vacant space in the city. And at this time, we're probably going to stay within our boundaries of the Fire Department and stay within the Fire Department floors and expand within.
Okay, so we won't have that expense for?
No, there's no additional expense.
Right. Any other questions? Mr. Parks?
Let me just ask one question on the issue of civilian investigators addressing complaints that are against sworn personnel. Has that, those issues been resolved, kind of known in the past?
You know, actually, we have resolved those issues, and I'd actually like Paul Hayashida, our Chief Investigator, to add to that here.
Councilmember Parks, committee members, Paul Hayashida, Chief Special Investigator, Professional Standards Division. Over time, we initially began partnering up sworn and civilian personnel to have the department accept the civilian personnel. We are now currently working under the auspices that the civilian can interview sworn and do the investigations, not necessarily with the assistance of sworn personnel. In the event that we come across an issue with the sworn personnel not accepting the initial direction of the civilian, we have a letter signed by the chief that we give to the member advising them that the civilian is working under the authority of the Fire Chief. And we've had a very good success. It's one of those things that, over time, the acceptance of the civilian personnel has been becoming part of the Fire Department.
I got a call, Mr. Zine, did you acknowledge Mr. Parks's arrival?
I did, I have not acknowledged Mr. Zine's arrival, who snuck in, and he is here now.
We were in another committee that started at 2:00. The question on the Bill of Rights, the fire officers, firefighters have a Bill of Rights like police officers?
It's very similar.
Okay, does that then state insubordination, et cetera, and who they need to answer to and not answer to? That issue when it comes to questioning?
Yes, and that is part of our admonition that we've tailored pursuant to the firefighter Bill of Rights, which contains wording similar to the libargar that's in the Peace Officer Bill of Rights.
Okay, so the investigators that you have, it all qualifies? So it complies with the Bill of Rights and compelled statements, et cetera?
We believe that the process we're following does meet the requirements of the firefighter Bill of Rights, as well as the city charter.
Has it been tested? Has it been certified by the city attorney, so we don't end up with litigation where someone challenges it?
Yes, many of the preliminary steps that we took, including our admonitions, were reviewed by the Labor Relations Attorneys.
And they approved it?
Yes.
That's all I had, thank you.
Do we have a motion to concur with the Public Safety Commission?
I'm sorry, before you do that, there is a speaker on this item.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I thought those were both for item seven. Pat McCosker with UFLAC on item six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, councilmembers. Pat McCosker, President of United Firefighters. I was listening to the testimony just now, and I heard Chief Bersick say that we've gone from 100 disciplinary investigations a year to 1,000, and that is certainly true. For that reason, really, I feel like I need to come up here and say something about this growth of PSD, this growth of civilian investigators that's before you, because we have budget problems here in LA. You know, we're closing fire companies and ambulances every day, because there's not enough money to go around and do it all. And we're really creating, you know, a problem here and saying, now that we've created a problem, we need more people to do the work. Most fire departments that are our size or nearly our size, and I'm in communication with all of them, will have a half a dozen, three or four maybe, disciplined cases a year, people that actually get time off without pay. We've got hundreds and hundreds of them, and it's an overreaction, you know, to a situation that led to us being in the newspapers a few years ago. Other fire departments handle things at the lowest level. You know, the immediate supervisor can correct the small problems. We literally investigate everything right now. We asked them the question not long ago, is there any complaint that gets entered anonymously in a computer from someone's home or at a firehouse when they're having the slightest difficulty with anybody that doesn't get investigated? Could a guy put in there "I don't like his breath" and have that not be investigated? And the answer is no, they investigate everything, and it shouldn't be that way. We've actually proposed recently, taken a position recently, that we should eliminate boards of rights. That's the most, you know, time-consuming, involved, expensive part of the disciplinary process that we have. We don't believe as a union we should have boards of rights anymore. We think they're archaic, it's a throwback to the old days before we had a firefighter Bill of Rights, which I championed, which our local cause to have happen in this state. It's a throwback to before you had those rights, and you had the ability to appeal discipline and have an arbitrator look at it, or an administrative law judge. We shouldn't even have that. So we should be talking about, we should be reopening discipline, putting behind us the dog food caver that led to this unbelievable overreaction and overpunishment of firefighters, and looking again at discipline on the LA Fire Department and how we can make it better, make it more effective, improve behaviors. Because nothing about firefighters' behavior has changed. They continue to be the good citizens that they've always been. Now we have 1,000 cases a year. We used to overdo it with 100. We could honestly do it in this city with half a dozen. Guys need to be corrected with some time off without pay. I don't think you should spend the money on this. I think it's ridiculous, you're closing ambulances and fire trucks. Thank you.
Okay, well intuitively, I would probably agree with you. The question is, you know, how then do you deal with a situation that's been problematic? And some expensive cases. I mean, one case costs more than the entire plan to investigate, you know, 1,000 cases over a course of a year.
So true, so true. And these cases end up, guys end up having lawyers contact them, you know, because of the inability to handle it the proper way at the lowest level. You would remember Councilmember Zine, you haven't been a police officer for all those years, that when there's communication, when there's support for the immediate supervisor, that the little friction between people can be handled at that level. But we don't do it that way anymore, you know? And because of that, we have these multimillion-dollar lawsuits. Those lawsuits, almost every one of them, is the city paying out millions because of the way that it mishandled, over-disciplined somebody. And we bet you guys have actually lost them on both sides of the case, you know? Paid out millions on either side. They're both right somehow. So this is what I'm saying. Nobody wants a disciplined fire department more than UFLAC. Nobody wants firefighters' behavior to be perfect and for us to reflect positively, you know, in the public. And what I'm saying is there's a better way to do this than this over-reliance on strict discipline and more and more investigators. It's empire building. The more investigators you add, the more cases there will be, the more thoroughly they will be investigated, the more unhappy firefighters, the more lawsuits, because it's empire building.
Mr. Zine?
Do they have an ombudsman within the Fire Department to resolve issues of dispute?
No.
Well, what I have found, yesterday, there was another classic case with the Police Department, risk management just didn't play into it, where the city lost over $2 million on a situation about a quota with traffic citations on motor officers. Risk management is a huge issue. And it's not that firefighters are getting complaints from people who are being transported to a hospital or firefighters destroy the house but save the electrical panel, unlike the police who kick in the door and get sued for damage to the property. But risk management is a key issue. But if there's no ombudsman, these issues that you're relating to could probably be oftentimes resolved with an ombudsman. You mentioned the Tenny Pierce case. Both sides, we paid out on both sides. The captains, and Mr. Pierce, and the other folks, so both sides, the city lost on both sides of the fence, which you wonder where's right, where's wrong. But I would suggest, as the union person that you are, the president of the union, to see if somehow an ombudsman program could be established. Because I can see what happens with overkill. Every single complaint is fully investigated because Professional Standards Bureau wants to do what they're supposed to do, and you start building an empire. And I think the LAPD Internal Affairs, Professional Standards Bureau, is oversaturated with hundreds of people investigating everything, and I've seen what happens with it. But I know you have to have some personnel to do investigations of the serious issues, but an ombudsman situation oftentimes can help resolve a lot of those and keep it out of court, keep a lot of litigation, and bring resolve to it. But that might be something you may want to bring up during your discussions on the contract.
We're for good ideas like that one, that's exactly where I'm coming from. We want a different discipline system that doesn't cost you so much money and leave so many problems.
And they have one ombudsman that helps bring the parties together and resolve it. The Police Department has started to move towards that with people who make complaints, an ombudsman with a citizen who just needs to have the officer explain why they were stopped, or whatever the case may be, to eliminate the complaint process. I understand what you're saying, and I think that there's other options other than building, and the Fire Department would end up building next year 2,000, then 3,000. They'll have more complaints than they have firefighters. And they're not generating from the outside community, they're generating from inside, which means an ombudsman hopefully could help resolve some of those issues.
Well, and I'm surrounded right now between my two colleagues by many decades of public safety experience here in the city. So I would ask both of you, you know, are we premature in hiring these nine positions and?
How many will it bring it to?
Fully funding this process, or is there another route that we should be looking at?
How many will that bring it to? I think we should, I've hired him two years ago.
Mark?
We have 24 now, and now we bring it up to 33.
33 investigators?
No. This is bringing in eight more on top of the, there's some sworn and some civilian.
I mean, total number of investigators, sworn, civilian, whatever the case may be?
We have a total of three civilian investigators, and we have a total of two captain, two that are actually assigned to Professional Standards.
Five.
That's it. We detail in from the field, because of the caseload, and additional seven captains from the field.
But that rotates through?
That we do rotate those through. So at that point, we would bring in another eight investigators.
Permanent?
The civilians would be permanent. And then we would actually look at the phasing out, if you will, of some of our sworn personnel if we didn't need them based on the civilian caseload and what we have at that point.
Do we have any kind of process to address the more minor of some of these complaints in a different way?
Sure, I would have to disagree with President Pat McCosker from UFLAC in that we do close out cases. There are cases that we may get that are anonymous complaints that we open, we look at, we do some preliminary investigation, basically by myself or the chief investigator, and then at that point, we will close them out. So not every single case, every case does get investigated, but it doesn't go through the full-blown process where we're actually assigning it to these folks that we're hiring. So there are processes in place to look at some of those cases, and we've adopted some additional things too.
Are there better things we could do to eliminate some of the more minor cases?
What about an ombudsman?
You know, that would be something, we'll bring that back to the chief and let him know. I mentioned it because you mentioned it at Personnel Safety, at Public Safety Committee, so we've already addressed that with the Fire Chief.
I mean, most of the complaints you think you generate are internal?
The majority of the complaints are internal, yes.
And that's what I'm thinking, if it's an internal situation, if it could be resolved with an ombudsman who comes in with this neutrality, you got this, you got that, I got to go, T, you got a beard, how do we resolve it? We both get a toupee, we'll be fine. That's what I'm saying.
We agree that one, we will definitely bring that to the chief and have that looked at.
So if we created such a position, could that not eliminate the need for some of these investigators?
It may and it may not. As of right now, like I said, we have, last year, we had... It may and it may not. As of right now, like I said, we have, last year we had about 985 cases. Right now in PSD, we have about 158 cases that our Internal Affairs investigators are working on, which is a significant caseload. And when you look at the EEO cases, I've got, we have six EEO cases that have not even been assigned yet. We've got 25 Internal Affairs cases that haven't been assigned yet because we have no one to assign them to. These EEO cases are the ones that concern me probably to the most, because we need those folks to get in there and to start looking at those investigations, because if something's done wrong with those cases, those are the high-dollar cases.
How problematic would it be if we held this item until we had some feedback on the possibility of an ombudsman and whether that might replace the need for some of these investigators?
In my opinion, I've been at public, I've actually been at Professional Standards now for eight months, and in my opinion, it would be very problematic. The caseload that our current investigators is carrying is twice as much as the caseload that LAPD carries, and based on that, it's a significant burden to try to get things done. We're on statute dates on a continual basis in that we're looking at cases right now and just trying to get them completed by the statute date where they go out of statute.
What kind of cases? For example, officer fails to qualify, officer has a traffic collision, officer, you know, loses his radio. I mean, those are big investigations. Or are these serious allegations or are these issues that could be resolved in a different?
Actually, I'm going to have Paul Hyasheeta address those, because he has the details on those.
Paul Hyasheeta, Chief Special Investigator, Professional Standards. Councilmember Zion, the chain of command investigations, which probably are more apt to be handled by an ombuds or at a lesser process, are generally sent to the chain of command. What PSD keeps are the more serious allegations of misconduct, either alleged criminal activity, off-duty conduct, EEO or hazing or horseplay related. And those are the ones that we're seeking the staffing for. Right now, as of today, about 45% of our cases remain in PSD of the total active cases in the fire department. So the staffing that we're seeking is really to keep on top of the more serious allegations that require the additional training and expertise that a trained investigator would bring.
What, what kind of criminal cases?
If it's off-duty, criminal arrests or pending prosecution by law enforcement, we handle it here. So it's anywhere from a DUI up to felony assault, drug possession, those type of things.
Can I give this a little flavor? I mean, I heard it said that we don't investigate everything, but we absolutely do. In fact, that was the response when my attorney wrote in a letter to PSD recently demanding that they not continue with their frivolous investigation of me. But here's a personal experience. I'm being investigated right now. I'm going to have a taped interview with two fire department captains as soon as my attorney gets back, back to town, and I'm being investigated for coming back to work too soon. I had elbow surgery many months ago, and the allegation is that with my arm in a sling, and in no violation, by the way, of any restrictions against me, I was seen in this building during the three weeks that I was off-duty. I was back to full firefighting duty in three weeks from elbow surgery. The allegation against me, and I won't comment on whether or not it's accurate, is that I was, and it was, the allegation against me, by the way, was made at the height of my reelection campaign just a few months ago. So it's a very frivolous and obviously ridiculous investigation being done against me that our attorney demanded be dropped, and he's right, it should be. But their response is, no, we investigate everything, no matter how trivial. We'll see you with our tape recorder in a few weeks.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we have the fire department come back on the ombudsman fact and that, knowing from my note, as 40 years with the LAPD and working as a sergeant and also working in the protective league and seeing how these things get blown out of control and knowing firsthand about the Tenny Pierce case, I think we need to look at, before we add more bodies and more expense, look at other options. Because I know it's coming internal. They're not external. And if someone gets arrested for DUI, that's not a full-blown investigation, because law enforcement does that. If someone's getting arrested for drugs, they're going to get prosecuted, maybe sent to jail or lose their job. I mean, I just, I can't see additional expenditure you're building, and no disrespect, you're building an Internal Affairs empire in the fire department, and I don't support that. So I'm going to make a recommendation that we come back.
Let me have another view. First of all, the charter says that the fire chief is responsible for discipline. And if you don't give the fire chief the resources that he needs, he can't do his job. Secondly, this unit is not all about Tenny Pierce. All you have to do is go through the Claims Board and the Budget and Finance Committee over the last three to four years and see the litany of litigation about activities well beyond Tenny Pierce. And the other issue I think is we talk about, because I created the ombuds position in the police department, that is not a position that deals with misconduct. That's a position that deals with disputes well before they become misconduct or deals with issues that you can resolve. The Internal Affairs process is for discipline. And although some people may label things as frivolous, we've had people go to prison on a frivolous complaint, because when you don't know the results of the complaint until you investigate it. What we used to do in LAPD for decades was we'd let a supervisor decide whether a complaint was legitimate on an initial interview. Once you find out, the initial interview then allowed over 800 to 900 people decide what discipline was. You don't get a real sense of what is going on in the investigation until you investigate it. You can't make judgments about it on the basis of someone's impression, and probably the last person you'd need to take their word for it if they're being investigated. The issue is, is that the investigation will tell the story when it's finished and then it's adjudicated. And if it's frivolous, the other benefit is, is that if a person makes a number of frivolous complaints, it also goes in the file, so that you have a record of those who create frivolous complaints. And so the benefit is for the chief of police, and also, we have to realize that the discipline system and the investigative system is not for the employees. It's for the community to have a sense, the credibility, that the department is dealing with issues that they think are relevant. And I think that's where we missed the point as to what the system is set up for. It's not that the employees are happy with it, it's whether the community believes you're taking their complaints seriously and whether the serious investigations are being dealt with appropriately. And again, all you have to do is go back and look at our Budget and Finance and our Claims Board over the last three to four, three to five years, and your sense of what was being done as it relates to in the fire department, you get a different perception. And some of these cases even reflected that individuals were getting promoted while they were involved in multiple misconducts. And so these are things I think you have to keep in perspective. But again, the charter tells us very clearly, it's the chief of the fire department who needs the resources to do his job.
But as was stated by Chief Ursick, is these are internal complaints. Internal complaints means it's not someone in the community, not someone requesting fire service. These are firefighters, paramedics that somehow have a dispute with another member of the fire department, and I would think that the complaints from the outside are very, very few. If someone gets arrested for DUI or selling drugs or taking drugs or steroids, whatever the case may be, I don't think you need a whole bureau to make that happen, so I'm not going to support it.
Actually, Councilmember Zion, if I can address that, over one-third of our complaints are from the outside.
And the other thing is, many complaints that are internal are about misconduct that occurs that may affect the community. So it's not just employee-on-employee. An employee can bring a complaint that they observed misconduct in the field or they've been advised of misconduct by a citizen. So it's not just internal complaints or just two employees that don't get along.
And I wish it were true that we could track who's making the frivolous complaints, and that would go in their file, and eventually that would be dealt with if someone kept making complaints. But the complaints that are made on the fire department that are investigated are made anonymously. You can make them from a computer online without giving your name, and it will be investigated, as was the complaint against me. I can't face my accuser. I have an idea who it might have been, but I don't know for sure who it was, because it was made anonymously, and it will be investigated, and it's completely frivolous.
I'd like to address that, in that of the 1,000 complaints that were done last year in the system, only 70 of them were done anonymously.
Out of how much?
Out of the 1,000. So the anonymous complaints are much limited in nature than stated. And the other issue I'd like to bring to the table is, the fire chief does understand that this is a priority. It's been, he actually listed it in a priority package for his budget for the upcoming year. He understands that there's numerous complaints that need to get investigated that aren't coming up on statute that haven't been investigated, and we need the additional staffing in order to look at the Internal Affairs complaints. The complaints that are of a lower magnitude, as Paul Hyasheeta indicated, are kept at the field level. So they are in the chain of command, and that's where they go to. So we're not asking for the staffing for those other complaints that can be handled by the supervisors in the field. These are of the level that when you read about it on the front page of the LA Times, I don't think anybody sitting in this room would want to read about those type of complaints on the front page of the LA Times.
If you have 3,000 firefighters, that means if you're getting 1,000 out of 3,000 firefighters, 1,000 firefighters get complaints. I can't see 1,000 significantly important complaints. I don't think there's that many firefighters who are that blatantly committing any kind of violation. I can't support it.
Nothing is handled at the lower level, nothing.
It seems like an awfully large percentage to be, to be that many serious complaints. Mr. Zion, I wonder if you could restate your motion?
My motion is for them to come back with the ombudsman or other program, and also a list of the categories of complaints that you were talking about. A list, you say, are there 1,000 complaints? We don't need the names, but a list of the types of complaints. And then we will have that at the next personnel meeting before we approve this, if we do approve it. I wouldn't approve it at this juncture.
May I ask, could we verify the number of anonymous versus the number of sort of signed complaints?
I'd certainly be happy to do that.
We don't want names. You can retract the names. All I want to do is get the numbers.
We must be able to verify, because what I know to be true on the fire department is that guys will make anonymous complaints against one another over every little dispute, and it is investigated by a couple of fire captains, you know, live arguing the witness.
Okay, anyway, that's my motion.
If we could have a vote on Mr. Zion's motion? All those in favor, aye. As opposed, that passes on a two-to-one vote.
So for the record, are you continuing the item in committee and asking that they come back next week with the answers that Mr. Zion requested and that you seconded?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Anything else?
And then item number seven?
Before we go to item seven, now that you have your two other members, do you wish to go to the previous items that you approved on your own, so that we get sent as reporters?
Yes, if we could. Those are all relating to exempt positions, if we could, without objections.
Without objection.
Can we have the fire chief?
Okay.
No matter what you've done.
One week, I'll come back in a week.
Yeah.
If that's okay. But you might just try to educate us about, as a fire chief, what your?
Well, I've been, I've been the fire chief now almost 20 months. You haven't seen not one article in the newspaper, on television. My Professional Standards investigators are working day and night to keep the pace with the workload that they've got. They need help. The Independent Assessor's Report came out and said that we need to make changes in professional standards. We've made those changes that we can. We need the additional staff. You can't expect me to maintain the good order and discipline of the fire department if I don't have the tools to do it. So I'm asking you to support me, to support the expansion of PSD. We need trained, professional, civilian investigators, people that will come in there, they won't just pass through in 18 months, 24 months, and then go back to a field assignment. They'll be career investigators. The quality of the investigations will improve. We're doing everything we can to modify and change the work environment within the fire department. I think, I think we've made a lot of progress. I think we've still got a long ways to go. Our firefighters are just like the general public. They're still getting in trouble. We're still doing the investigations. We're doing as much as we can to minimize the impact of frivolous complaints. We investigate everything. There's not a complaint that comes to the fire department that we don't investigate.
And I think that's the problem, chief. I think that's the problem. Whether it's frivolous or not, it's being investigated. And if you've got 3,000 firefighters and you're doing 1,000 investigations, I don't think you have 1,000 firefighters.
Well, the difference between the other departments in the city and the fire department is, my organization is 96, 97% men. I've got women in 106 fire stations times three platoons, over 318 fire station assignments. I can't run the risk that I've got a woman sitting in a fire station out in the west end of the valley, and she's being subjected to abuse, and she's afraid to report it. So I have to investigate and look at everything that I possibly can to control the work environment and make sure that everybody is doing what they're supposed to do.
And each station has a captain, and each area has a battalion, and an assistant chief. I mean, you look at the pecking order in the fire department.
But every fire station has got a locker room.
Okay.
And I'll tell you, you put a three-year female firefighter in a locker room with a 25-year male firefighter, and I'm not saying that we are all, that we're not bad people. But every now and then, you're going to get someone who's going to potentially.
Well, in your term, how many people, how many firefighters have been fired?
I don't know.
From misconduct?
Probably seven, six or seven, and I've got a few more that probably are going to lose their jobs here in the near future, too.
For internal activities?
Internal and external.
Okay.
So I, I.
Well, what I've asked for is a look at the numbers.
What I promised you when I became your fire chief was that I would manage the fire department, run it to the best of my ability, and maintain the work. I mean, everyone wanted to know that I was going to maintain the work environment, and I think I've done a pretty good job up to this point.
I don't think anybody's criticizing you, but you know what the budget is, you know where the issues are, you know where the priorities are. But if you're investigating 1,000 firefighters out of 3,000, I would think that might be a little over the top. And if you've got that many activities that are taking place, risk management, ombudsmen, there's ways to correct it other than giving them the termination notice.
Right, right.
They work a long time to get there.
With all due respect, this, this item has already been discussed.
Okay, I understand that.
I want to hear from you as a courtesy.
I understand that.
We've already given direction. I don't think that direction's going to change, which is between now and the next personnel meeting, take a look at other things we could be doing, like ombudsman, to reduce the number of cases that aren't the most serious, and then come back to us and present.
Okay, thank you. One thing that I'd like to say, though, is if I don't get the additional staff, don't criticize me for not managing and maintaining the work environment the way that it should. So that's, that's all I've got to say. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
But give us a serious look at whether there are some ways to minimize those cases.
We will. Thank you very much.
And we're not a bunch of misogynists. We should really investigate, keep investigating all the complaints by females against males. We're absolutely.
Mr. Scott McCosker, you're out of order. We're on the next item.
Again.
Me too.
If we could go to item number seven?
For item seven, what you have before you is a motion by Mr. Labange and Ms. Han instructing the chief legislative analyst, the city administrative officer, and the personnel department to report on opportunities for consolidating the city's human resource functions of city departments.
And if we could have your report on that?
Yes, the initiative is progressing, and we would like to come back to the Personnel Committee to report more specifics.
Can you explain the concept of HR consolidation?
Well, it's actually human resource, shared services. As a result of ERIP and managed hiring and turnover, we have lost a number of HR employees, as well as we have departments that don't have HR employees. So we are looking at ways that we can provide the services without having it cost the city additional money. So it's pretty, pretty straightforward.
Are there any potential disadvantages to doing this?
Well, I think that employees who are currently in departments, I believe that that's a difficult change for them. I also think that there are probably general managers who are concerned about this, because they're afraid that they will no longer be the priority, which certainly would not be any direction that we would want to go in. So we have developed pretty comprehensive shared services agreements to guarantee to the general managers what the services would be, that would be provided, as well as certain departments are very unique, and they would have additional authorities and responsibilities that they would want for us to respond to.
And you had a consultant report on this. What was the report and?
Yes.
The recommendations?
Well, the recommendations, we were really looking at it through the consultant at a very, very high level. And that was more of a feasibility study than the specifics. So we have been working with the operating departments that are impacted to identify what those services would be, what the impact would be. But the, the outcome of the Equitera Report, which is the firm that conducted the study, is that this is very doable. This is probably, in most cases, a best practice. This is something that a number of organizations are turning to in order to deal with their budgetary crises that most local government and state governments are dealing with.
Is this part of the budget process in the upcoming year, or is this outside the budget?
Well, given the fact that the mayor's Well, given the fact that the mayor's budget has yet to be released, I don't believe that it is, but I'm not sure.
And, let's see. I wonder if we could ask the Personnel Department and the CO and CLA to report back by next week on an analysis of the situation, whether we should go forward?
I think that Ms. Houston may want to respond to that.
Excuse me. Actually, I was in conversation this morning with Greg Kettles from the mayor's office. Myself and Pete Etcheverria, we had a short conference call with him, and we asked that we have a little time to look into some of the legal issues that have been raised by this request. It may be that it's okay, but we're not certain of that at this point. And I just received shortly before this meeting, a copy of the shared services agreement, which I have not yet had an opportunity to review. So I think, I'm not sure where you were, but if the city attorney could report back as well on this matter, it would be helpful.
Continue.
I think, though, that the concern is, I'm not sure that you will have the information that we would need by the next meeting. So if we could do this-
The following-
Following meeting?
How long do you think you need?
May the 4th.
Three weeks?
When's the next meeting?
The next meeting, regular meeting, is April the 20th. After that, it will be May the 4th.
May 4th.
May the 4th sounds about right.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Other questions?
Continue, May 4th.
And we have one speaker, Cheryl Perisi.
Good afternoon. Let me just say, in terms of the general question, should there be efficiencies and to be secured in the human relations network in the city of Los Angeles? Absolutely. Are there departments, in virtue of their small size, who simply don't have the capacity to run, really, in some senses, a really competent personnel operation, simply because they no longer have the staff and resources to do that? Our concern about this report is that none of the stakeholders have really been engaged. There are just some obvious and glaring examples of issues that this raises. I mean, for example, there are six distinct personnel functions within the Department of Public Works in each of the bureaus. An obvious place for consolidation would be to consolidate all of those functions of one department into one operation within a department. Instead, what the study proposes to do is pull off one bureau's work. There just seem to be some logical inconsistencies. We would really ask that there be a broader stakeholder process in terms of really figuring out what the consolidation should be about, and how they can be effectuated. I think there is absolutely room and need for consolidation in certain areas. The question is, what consolidates with what? Certain departments still have a lot of capacity, a lot of professionalism. Do we want to dilute that? Or do we want perhaps to allow other departments' personnel capacity to merge with those departments? I think there are lots of ways to get at this challenge, and I think that those should be considered before we move down the path of consolidating every personnel function under the Personnel Department.